Street two quarter at seven P M. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one. All board members are present. Uh, Mr. Knight, would you give the indication?
Father, we just come for you tonight and just give you thanks for, you know, all the glory, Father. Father, as we go through tonight, and there's so many things that we need to look at and approve. Uh, Father, just give us the understanding, the knowledge, and the wisdom to do so. Father asks, is this school year? Father, just, uh, give us blessings over our teachers, our students, our, our staff, everyone involved with our community, Father, and watch over us. Thank you so much for hearing us, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Sebring, would you lead the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, let me announce to Texas America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor, respect, and fire, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, first, we will have our superintendent's report. Ms. Stanford?
Yes, we're gonna start with a construction update, uh, from Brent Stanford.
We are getting close to the end. Through this, uh, I wanted to put this map up here so you kind of understand where all the areas are. D, E, F, and G are really the academic wing, and then, then you have C, which is the athletic side. Uh, B is the library, and then A is the cafeteria and the fine arts side. So when we're talking about certain areas, you kind of know where I'm at. When you see a picture, I've kind of labeled them where they're at. But right now, uh, D, E, and F, they're wrapping up a lot. They're doing some punch lists, so that, that area is really looking good. Uh, G, they have a little bit more work to do, and, and they're hoping to wrap that up. And then you have C two and C one, the gym floor is down, and it's really looking good on, on both gyms. Uh, they're still getting acclimated before they stain it. They've even actually started putting some bleachers up in the gym. So those are looking good. The fine arts wing almost looks like it's complete, just a little bit of carpet left in the band hall, and then just some finishing up there. The, uh, the cafeteria is really looking real good, and, and it's, uh, got the flooring down and almost, almost finished there as far as looks appeal. There's still a lot of minor stuff they're doing and things like that. The library is where I think they've staged a lot of stuff, so it still has a little bit of ways to go before it's completed. So as of August twenty second, uh, overall completion's eighty-three percent. Uh, the, the site work, street connections are finished, sidewalks installed is in progress. Landscape and irrigation work is ongoing, so they've already started the landscaping and irrigation around the building. Uh, exterior, the brick and stone veneer is fully completed, windows and most exterior doors are installed. Academic wings, hallways and restroom, tiling is finished, painting and millwork are complete. Non-academic wings, there's just a little bit of interior walls to finish, and some painting and wall tile are wrapping up. Millwork and flooring will, uh, are still following, especially in the athletic side. They haven't started the flooring in the hallways yet. And then the athletic facilities, the athletic field track and tennis courts are complete, and then side paving and, uh, fencing is already underway. So on the north side of the property, they've got quite a bit of the fence up already, that they're, that they're installing, the eight-foot fence and, and all that. So this is before construction. This is the side, uh, profile of the whole school. This is the front. Now here's the front.
Wow.
Amazing.
So it's really looking good. They've come a long ways. Here's a high view of the football field. This is the concession stand right there and restrooms, uh, that we have at the football field. Be the, section G, the nurses' office. There's just a classroom in section F. This is your typical classroom that's throughout the whole building. Here's the hallway in section D. Uh, this is one of the, the main hallway through the whole building. When you come in the front doors, that's what you're looking down right there. This is the hallway in section D where you can have like a pull-out class. This is the cafeteria, all flooring down and ceiling up, and just doing some millwork and some finishing up. This is the fine arts hallway. You can see all the flooring's down. They put paper down, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. It was all concrete. All the ceiling tiles are up, all the lights are up. Here's the band hall. Everything is done except for the carpet, and it's really, really, a really nice facility. Here's the, oh, this is the, uh, practice gym, or I guess what you call the tornado shelter, and you can see the scans going up there. This is one of the courtyards, and this is what all the courtyards are gonna look like, all three of them. So it's a really nice courtyard in the middle of the building. That is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Is that hardscaped?
Yeah.
Do, now I'm talking about where the, um,
Plants are?
Where the plants are.
There'll be a few weeds we might have to pull if they blow in, but.
We didn't mul-, we didn't mulch it though, right? That's crushed granite?
Yeah.
Crushed, crushed granite, okay.
Yes.
That's awesome. Thank you, Brent. Thank you.
Looking good.
It is. I'm excited.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, and next we're gonna have Megan Corns. It's gonna give us the accountability update. And then Michelle, I wonder if they have any questions for you as well.
Good evening. So every year, we bring forward the assessment presentation, and we do a review of the assessment that we gave in the spring of the, of the previous school year. And so this year, I wanted to go ahead and include STAR Alt and Tellpass as well as STAR and STAR End of Course. And so we're gonna talk through, and those two assessments as well as our STAR results. And then we're also, because this year we have accountability ratings, we're gonna include an accountability overview as well. So just a review, we have performance levels in STAR, and these performance levels really talk to the pre-, to the next year's teacher about the level of intervention that student's gonna need. So if you notice, when you're looking at this, every student from did not meet to grade level all the way to approaches may need some type of level of intervention when they go into a new year's worth of content, because the content's new, and most likely gonna be harder than what they did the year before, and so they, they may need varying amount of intervention. But what this tells a teacher is that if a student needs approaches, then they're gonna need some specific targeted intervention throughout the year. If they meet meets, they're gonna need some short-term but targeted, and then if they have masters, then they should be able to succeed with little or no targeted, but they may still need some. If a student did not meet, then they're gonna need significant intervention, but that's also gonna come alongside our fourteen sixteen hours where students get varying amount of support in addition to what they're receiving in the classroom. And so every single, our goal is for every single one of our students, regardless of their level, to proceed and to have expectations for that next school year. And so what we're gonna focus on today is that approaches, meets, and masters in our performances last year. And so we're gonna start with third grade, third through eighth grade reading data, and so you'll see here, we have all of our third through eighth grade list listed. And our goal that we have set as a district is sixty percent at meets and thirty percent at masters. And so when we're looking at our reading scores, you'll notice that fifth grade is the closest one. We're getting closer and closer to that goal of sixty percent at meets and thirty percent at masters. And that's followed up by our seventh grade with that fifty percent, and fourth grade with fifty percent at meets. For our third through eighth math, you'll notice again that our fifth grade and our eighth grader both sitting at that forty-four, forty-three piece when it's coming to meets, and then our fifth grade is hitting at twenty-one percent for masters. One of the things that I want to point out is seventh grade math, 'cause it is one of the outliers for this group. So seventh grade, so our students, when they hit sixth grade, they can go into sixth grade regular classes or sixth grade honors. And at that point, they're placed on a track to get Algebra One in eighth grade. And the way that we have our current setup for our curriculum is that they take a sixth grader in honors, would take a sixth grade honors, would take sixth grade honors, and then they would take the sixth grade STAR test as a sixth grader. And then as a seventh grader, they would take seventh grade, and then they would take eighth grade STAR. So they would take seventh grade honors, and they would take the eighth grade STAR test. And then as an eighth grader, they would take Algebra One into force. And so our seventh grade numbers are not, are, do not include any of our honors students. So that's one of the things to point out there, and it's something that the curriculum department is working through and working to, and you'll see later how we've built some of the, um, the curriculum pieces in order to support, wanted, in to support that area. Third through eighth grade science and third through eighth grade social studies. So science is tested at fifth grade and eighth grade, and then social studies is tested at eighth grade. Our science tests were on new teaks, so this was the first year that we were tested on these teaks. And so that is an important piece to note. We had curriculum that this teachers were working through this last year. And then end of course. Our end of course are high school exams. And here you'll notice that our biology class, um, was close at that to our goal of sixty percent with a fifty-eight percent in biology. And then we are looking at our masters, um, Algebra One had that twenty-five percent, and this does include our, um, middle school students and our high school students, and then U S history had that twenty-six percent. STAR Alt is the STAR alternative test. So this is given to a very small number of students, and they have to meet very strict guidelines in order to be given a STAR Alt test. And so they have to have significant cognitive disabilities, and they have to meet very strict requirements for participation. They also are then, when the test is administered to them, it's administered one-on-one by the teacher, and it has simplified language, visual supports, and it's very, the teacher has time to do some of the accommodations and to work with a student on making sure that all the student accommodations are given to the student, um, prior to the test as well. And the STAR Alt tests are scored satisfactory or accomplished, so that's the difference with this. You'll notice I'm not gonna include E O C because our E O C numbers are so small and that it's not something that we can actually show, um, in public, because the numbers are so small, um, for our E O C star, our E O C STAR test. Then we also have Tellpass. Tellpass is our, it's an assessment for, it's called the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System, and it is given to kindergartners through twelfth grade that are learning English as a second language. So beginning this, if they are enrolled in the school, then they begin taking this test as a kindergarten. It's broken into four pieces, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and it is focused on measuring their English language development. The goal is that they are exited out of this test, that they actually achieve to a point that we know that they are mastering the English language, and that this test can actually, um, they can actually exit and then become into a monitored group. And so this is our numbers, and so this begins, again, it's kindergarten through twelfth graders, but it can be a variety of years that they've been in Texas or in the U S schools, in Texas schools. And now we're gonna move on to accountability. So as we look at accountability, there are domains. We have three domains that we get our accountability rating. Student achievement, student progress, and closing the gaps. Under student progress, there are two domains under there that we pick the better of, so either academic growth or relative performance. And so we're gonna go through this, um, and talk through each of the different domains. The point of the, the rating system and the accountability system is to make sure that we are showing to all of our stakeholders that we believe all students can achieve at high levels, and that they can learn at high levels, and that we're being transparent with all the public and making sure that our, um, our growth is seen for the public. And so as we look at an A through F rating, here's how it breaks down. We have student achievement, which is what students know and can do. So it is looking at those pieces, and we're gonna break that down even more in a second. Then you have school progress, and you'll notice that's seventy percent of the rating, but it's one or the other. So it's the better of the two of those, and even under school progress, it's the higher of the two, either academic growth or relative performance. That makes up seventy percent of the rating, and then the closing the gaps is thirty percent of the rating, and that's on a campus-by-campus basis. As a district then, what they look at is they're using the same methodology, but then they wait the schools for the district average based on how many, what their enrollment numbers are. And so for us, Red Oak High School is our largest campus, so it makes up the majority of our enrollment and the majority of our rating. And so when you look here, these are proportional ratings for the district for this last school year. And so forty-four percent of our district rating was based on the performance at Red Oak High School, twenty-nine at Red Oak Middle School, and then the rest was ma-, were made up in five elementary campuses. As we go into twenty twenty-six, it again is primarily made up by the high school, but then we also now have Joy Shaw Middle School and Red Oak Middle School, and then we have the different campuses. You'll notice at this point, Shutman Elementary is sitting at eleven percent, um, which will actually be greater than Shaw Middle School for this upcoming school year. And so again, it's looking at, making sure that we, that we're looking at all of our students, and then it's weighting based on those pieces. This again is, um, and I believe I may have some updated information on that one, 'cause I don't know. We are looking at our, um, enrollment numbers again, and so this one may have a little bit of a difference, um, as we move forward. But we'll, I'll circle back to you on that one. Okay, so as we look at the overall rating across the state, when the A through F ratings started, they started back in twenty seventeen as a what-if, and then they began. And then you'll notice that there was, um, that, that dotted line that is going down. That's when the STAR redesign happened. And so that is how kind of the, the trend of all of the state went over the last few years. And so you can see our trend, and this is the history of the district the last several years since twenty nineteen. Last school year was when twenty twenty-three was released, and then this last few weeks, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And so let's talk through the different domains. So the first domain is student achievement. So you can see our history on here. Student achievement again is broken down by what are the students able to do, and how is the performance? And so in that, you're looking at all of the STAR scores, E O C, Tellpass, it's looking at everything. It's looking at all of those scores, um, E O C and STAR and STAR Alt. Tellpass is included in a different case. Um, it's looking at graduation rates, and it's looking at college career and military readiness. So it's on that C C M R, that C C M R piece is looking at our twenty twenty-four graduates. It's a lagging indicator. So that is not our current, our most recent graduates. It's the graduates from the year before. One of the things to note here is we have focused in on this domain as we started the year, and my department has been working with the campuses, and we actually worked with five of the campuses during pre-service and met with teachers and staff. worked with five of the campuses during pre-service and met with teachers and staff in the administration there to talk through how the score is calculated and really getting an understanding of how it's calculated for all teachers and administration. So then we have the area of school progress. And in school progress, you have academic growth, and then you have relative performance. Academic growth is only calculated in reading and math, and then the relative performance is looking at a comparison. And so from this, they're going to pick the higher of the two. And so as we look at academic growth, again, it's reading and math only. It's tracking from year to year, and we work with the campuses to understand it's an idea that no one goes backwards. So if I'm a student and I'm at accomplished or approaches the first, my third grade year, as I go into fourth grade, even if I get approaches, I've made a year's worth of growth because fourth grade is harder than third grade. And so as long as I don't go backwards, I'm making that year of growth. And so it's really working with teachers. So the last few weeks, we've been working with teachers during PLCs to start some student portfolios in one of our programs that they can go in and put what the student did last year. And so then they can start tracking them in Edge of Orias, our program, and they can track them through different activities throughout the year to make sure that the students are moving forward. And then they're also working with something hands-on for the student to do. It goes back to our level up idea of making sure that the student knows this is my goal, and I'm going to be leveling up throughout the year, and I'm not going to go backwards. So it's really articulating that goal, not just to the teacher, but all the way down to the student, and then turning that around. Several of the campuses are working on turning that around to even parents, just talking them through, this is where your student was last year, and our goal is to not go backwards, and these are the skills that they're working with. Relative performance looks at our economically disadvantaged percentage. And so what we included here was we went ahead and included our percentage over the last three years. And then we also wanted to include the percentage of some of our neighboring districts. One of the reasons there is because TEA compares us to like campuses. There's a campus comparison list that we all receive. And so you know kind of your, what campus you're compared to, and that economically disadvantaged percentage is utilized in that comparison. And so it's a, it's a really important measure to be able to sit there and look at how you're performing engaging compared to other like campuses. And so what they, what that little scatter plot that's on the left is kind of, that's TEA's explanation of how they make, they determine that letter grade for relative performance. And then we have domain three. The domain three is closing the gaps, and this one is looking at specific targets for every single area within this, this section. And then it's also looking at test scores. It's looking at graduation rates. It's looking at college career and military readiness. But it's looking at these four categories that it's on this, this chart here. So it's looking at all students, and then it's looking at your two lowest ethnicity groups, and then an area called high focus. High focus includes economically disadvantaged, our emergent bilingual, our current special education, and our highly mobile students. Each, if a student is, meets multiple of those, they're only going to be counted once, but those are the students that are counted in that highly focused, that high focus section. And so a student can appear in, in each of those categories, but in that high focus, they might, they're only going to be calculated once. So as you look at our calculation, our student achievement, which was that domain one, we received seventy-three out of a hundred. Our school progress was higher than our academic growth this last year, and so we received seventy-five points out of a hundred. And then our closing the gaps was eighty out of a hundred. And so when you do that math, that gave us an overall rating of a seventy-seven out of a hundred. So to go through, when the public is looking at our ratings, they can go to Texas Tech Schools, TXschools.gov, and that is where you can actually do a comparison. You can look at specific schools, but then you can do a comparison of different districts and campuses. So today we wanted to go ahead and look at Ellis County. And when we're looking at Ellis County, if you look at the left-hand side, that is our scores. Those are our domains that we just went over. And so you'll see student achievement, school progress, our two, the two pieces of school progress, which is academic growth and relative performance, and then that closing the gap score. In the second column under Red Oak, you'll see the STAR performances, and you'll see the different, and that's a, that's all of the tests combined, approaches, meets, and masters, and our percentages there. And then you can see the different campuses as well. So these are secondary campuses, our elementary campuses, our bilingual elementary campuses. And then earlier I talked through the distinctions. So we have campus comparison groups, and from those groups, we earn distinctions. And we are proud to say that we had Wooden Elementary, Shields Elementary, and Red Oak High School earn distinction, distinctions this last year. And this is a huge accomplishment, and we're so proud of them. They worked very, very hard. We debated the confetti today, but we didn't. A lot of work goes into those distinctions because it's a combination of multiple factors. Attendance being one of them. There are just several pieces that have to be all hit right in order to earn a distinction. It's a lot of hard work. And so to summarize, so celebrations are our campus distinctions. That's a huge accomplishment. And then CCMR, y'all know that CCMR has been something we've been bringing back to the board multiple times throughout the last two years, and it is a piece that we worked really hard. Mr. Cordero's led a charge with Mr. Howe at the camp, at the high school campus to really push for all of our students to be CCMR met. As we were going through the, this data again for like the tenth time this month, the thing that I was most proud of, because you know, when you're in it, you don't always step back and look at how far you've come. The closing the gaps gain is huge, and it is something to really highlight because it really is about targeting some of our groups that have a lot of things that need to be targeted. And so this, when you're looking at that high focus group, that's a group that really has some significant work ahead of them. And so the fact that we were able to have a twenty-two point game there is huge. And then since twenty-twenty-three, we've had an eight-point gain in our overall district rating. And so areas of opportunity. Red Oak Middle School, Enjoy Middle, Enjoy Shaw Middle School have have had a lot of students on one campus, and so that split is creating a lot of opportunity as we bring on new staff, as we continue to meet the needs of that population. Then as we look at our new science teaks that are tested, and so that piece of bringing on that curriculum and making sure that we're hitting the exact message that the TEAK has for us to teach is a huge piece. And then focusing on reading and complex text. So when you have a lot of students that are reading at different levels, I'm thinking third grade, when you think of a third grader, you're going to have varying amount of different reading levels. But when they come to STAR, they have to read at a third grade level. And so making sure that our text is complex throughout the year and that we're not changing the level of texts because the student is still struggling with reading, that we're still testing them at a high level of complex text. Conceptual understanding of math. So I love math. And so we need to make sure our students really understand more than just step one, step two, step three, but they understand the why behind it. But then there's a balance between understanding the why, but then also being able to just know your facts. And so making sure that we're balancing that and making sure that we're still putting a focus on that fact. Because it can't all come from a ten-step process. Sometimes they just need to know what the multiplication answer is. And so as we look at next steps, the curriculum department has been working really hard with Carnegie Math. They are bringing them in to do training and support of our secondary campuses because we know that is an area throughout the district that we're working on, and so specifically supporting our sixth grade through Algebra One with Carnegie. We're working with Region Ten with our elementary teachers on high-yield strat, teaching strategies and bringing them in because if we can get that high-yield strategy early, then there's less of a gap to fill as they move forward. We're doing walkthrough calibrations across all campuses, and one of the things that we're able to do through that is have different, have administrators go to different campuses and see different things. We can see what's working at various campuses and talk through that. We've already had Region Ten come out once and support our administrators in teacher feedback and making sure that we're providing teacher feedback that gives information to change the instruction in the classroom, and then also bringing them back to do some data walks with us and look at data from a different point of view and through, through the support of Region Ten. We also are providing, spoke earlier, my department is working hand-in-hand with teach, with the campuses. We've been on the campus about seven or eight times already this year and several appointments scheduled in the weeks to come. And so really partnering and utilizing our data to impact instruction all the way down to the kid level. And then working with, the curriculum department is working with campuses on a prioritized campus support, and so providing the support to the campus based on their needs and working with the coordinators at that level and working with the instructional coaches at that level. So really prioritizing where that support is needed for. And at that time, we will take questions, and Ms. Owen and Mr. Cordero will be available as well if I can answer.
What the middle school, have you taken a preliminary look at? For this past test, maybe come back a couple of it, that's. Are there any surprising gaps that we may see, we have to plan for?
That we have, so what was interesting was the STAR scores were almost identical. They were just, the difference was not statistically significant. One of the areas that we think that I, that we came across recently is the number of, of students in seventh grade math taking honors because the legislation passed last year that if they were in fifth grade and they stored, they scored masters, and they were automatically placed in sixth grade honors. And so that has increased our numbers in sixth grade honors, and there is a difference in the percentage at one campus versus. So those are pieces that we're looking at and supporting.
So who's doing the walkthrough calibrations or whatever you were talking about? Who does that?
Myself. And then we bring in our coordinators, our instructional coaches, who will get that, and.
So are we talking to the teachers themselves to see if there's issues going on that they need help with, or? I mean, because sometimes, I know they're administrators, but sometimes teachers don't automatically go to those administrators and say, ah, I'm struggling.
What is our percentage of students that have to take the ALT?
I'm not going to have that percentage, but I can get it to you.
Thank you.
And it's going to vary by grade level. It's going to vary. Yes, it's a very, very, very. I'm going to throw it to Mr. Cordero and let him give specifics.
I didn't bring my dancing shoes, but I'll, I'll ask you a question. Megan brought her dancing shoes. She did a good job. And you know, I did tell Brett he didn't have to come, but he said he's coming anyway. But since he's here, I just would like to give the high school a public shout-out for the B and all of the work that they've been doing around CCMR. And student management, all these other things. So glad you came, Brett. So with CCMR, first of all, we have a robust steering committee, and the steering committee meets every other week. And you know, on average, you could say that when we meet every other week, it's about ninety minutes. But when we, when we get deep into the work, some of those meetings last three hours and four hours. And when we decide we're going to go through every single senior and every single junior to see that they have a CCMR plan, that's a small team out of that committee that locks themselves up in a room for an entire day. And what we, I'll just take the seniors. We take the entire senior class and we look at what they're doing currently, what they started doing in the ninth grade, and what is the best plan for them. So if they're a HAWK scholar and they've been earning a lot of dual credit hours, then we know that Plan A is that they're going to earn their nine hours there. There's a lot of different ways you can earn the CCMR point. If you, if you get nine hours in any content of dual credit, you, you get the point. If you get three hours in math, you check off the box. If you get three hours in reading, you can check off the box. Cosmetology, the students can now graduate with more than nine hours of dual credit in cosmetology. So the folks that are going through cosmetology, if we see that they're on track to earn nine, twelve or more dual credit hours, then we know that that is their plan. But for others, we have a Plan A and a Plan B. So there's some students that are, we're hoping that they're going to be completers in CTE pathways, and they're on their way to earn industry-based certifications, then that might be their Plan A, and it just depends on the student. So we look at the whole child and all of the classes that they've been taking since the ninth grade, and we do the best that we can to make a good, a good judgment call. And this past year, to give you an example of that judgment call, the high school ended up with an eighty-six percent. That's been a lot of years in the making. I think four years ago, it was like fifty-nine, and then sixty-seven, seventy-two. So it was a huge jump, huge concerted effort. And so you might ask yourself, what are we going to do this year? Well, we're going to do the same thing we did this past year. It's a lot of work every other week, again, ninety minutes up to four hours of meeting, up to full days. We have agendas. We plan throughout the whole semester and the whole year in terms of what that scope and sequence might look like, in terms of what our focus area needs to be. One thing that's different this year that, that we have not done in the past is Brett told the seniors that they were not going to get early release or late arrival if they didn't come this summer to do the Texas College Bridge. So he had about eighty, hundred and one kids that came this summer that said they wanted early release or late arrival. So out of the gate, we started the school year off with over thirty percent of the seniors already CCMR met. We're going to do the same thing with the juniors, and you all approved a curriculum recently called Mastery Prep. That's a three-prong approach. It helps us focus on the fourteen, sixteen students. It helps us focus on SAT, and it's going to help us focus on the TSIA two test, which was the test that you previously had to take, to take any kind of dual credit courses in college. Of course, now you can take fifteen. So a couple of things about CCMR. It's not just for the kids that are trying to go into a career. The career piece is a big part of it, but it's also for the kids that are trying to go into college. So we're focusing on kids that want high SAT scores. We, high ACT scores, and then the students that want to go to junior college and take the TSIA two test. So there's a lot, and then the dual credit and the HAWK scholars. This past year, we had two students that graduated from the HAWK Scholars Program. Hopefully, knock on wood, it'll be the last time that happens. Starting this year and for years to come, that's going to be in the double digits. There's been a very concerted effort to overhaul the HAWK Scholars Program, which will be a future presentation for y'all. So this year, you should expect at least ten, following year fifteen, and the number should just continue to grow. So that's on the college side. On the career side, it's CTE, it's the industry-based certifications, and then of course, military as well. Not to mention that CCMR, you just saw how much weight the high school pulls for the entire district average in terms of accountability. Well, CCMR alone for the high school is a significant portion of their accountability. So we do want the teachers to continue to teach and raise the needle on the tier-one instruction and continue to catch the kids that are falling through the cracks with tier-two and tier-three. That's your targeted. That's your targeted intervention supports. But we, from an accountability standpoint, we have, we have to continue to improve CCMR. So you'll be happy to know that this year our goals to be, what is it Brett? At least 90% CCMR met. And so real concerted effort.
Thank you. I do have one more.
Okay.
Sorry, it won't take but a second. You when you first started, you were talking about the. The chart there that had the your goals, the six was the 60% and and 30%. How did we determine those particular goals?
So as you're looking at. There's a couple of pieces. So. Part of it is that as you're looking just at the different at the different. Right down there, let me go actually, let me switch over to the capability. That 60%, when you look at our ratings. The closer you get to 60% for a for meets, the closer you are to. To and to getting a. So if you look at shields here, they're at that they're at 52%. So if we can, because of all the different calculations mathematically, if that number can get to 60. And then we can move that masters up to that 30 mathematically, we're going to hit what we need for. To to have an A.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Corns?
I know you said that you're they're testing periodically. Will we see the data from the first of school? Till the end of school to where we can kind of see how these kids are growing as well? I mean, will there be something that? We can kind of watch to see huh?
Let me let me answer real quickly. If the current Senate bill passes, which it's already passed. The how or one committee going into another one, we're not going to be allowed to give those benchmarks. They're taking that. Ability away from us. So that'll be determined. They're not going to allow us to do benchmarking anymore. So we'll have to wait and see what the state does.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Corns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're almost done. Okay, and then I just had a couple of things, just a few reminders. First of all, I want to say first day, first couple of weeks of school has gone amazing. It's been challenging. Everyone knows we've got the weapon detection system. We have the new state law on the cell phones. So there's been some challenges, some bumps. It's taken a lot of people to get things going and but we're getting there. All in all, I'll say it's been a successful start to the year. So. Kudos to everybody that has jumped in and and made these challenges a little less of a challenge. Dr. Joy Shaw Middle School, Meet the Teacher is going to be Tuesday, August 26th. That's tomorrow. From 6:00 to 8:00 PM and then ROMS Red Oak Middle School is going to be Thursday, August 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We are going to have our first game. We had the scrimmage, but our first game is going to be at Goodlow Stadium for the Red Oak Hawks against Colville Heritage at 7:00 PM at Goodlow. Safety Week is going to take place September 2nd through September 5th. It's a short week, but we all agreed we need to go ahead and get that done. Coffee Talk is going to be on Wednesday, September 3rd at 7:45. I expect a lot of people on because again. Very controversial things when you're talking about the cellphone and the pouches and things like that. We're following the law. So but some things that we may have to have some conversations on. And the next Mobile Food Pantry will be on Thursday, September the 11th at 4:00 PM here at the ESC. And then our next Regular Board Meeting is Monday, September 15th at 7:00 PM. And that's all I have.
Okay, we will move into our. Open forum section. And we. I have to read the little script here. We now move to the public comment section of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who have completed public comment forums this evening. With they are accepted prior to the start of the meeting and are not transferable to other speakers. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Two minutes per person have been allotted for the public comments. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue. You're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies on the district website. Finally, remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda. So when I call your name, if you will come up to the podium and state your name for the record. The clock back here will start as soon as you say your name and it'll let you know when your two minutes are over. So Debbie, I have two. Is that it? Okay, Ms. Kristy Kelso.
Hello, my name is Kristy Kelso and we have been in this district for 13 years, I think. And I am here because my son, one of my children goes to Joy Shaw Middle School. And we're super excited about the new school and I think that's wonderful. There are some challenges with the way that this is set up, however, in combination with Red Oak Middle School. The students are having to go across the campus from CTE to the sixth grade center several times a day. Not once, not twice, three, four, five times they're having to cross over. And there are concerns with tardiness. They're having to run. I see students running across the campus to get to class. I just think that that is ridiculous and we need to look at. A policy that allows Joy Shaw Middle School students a little more time to get to class so that they're not rushed. And don't feel like that they are not going to make it on time. My student is a rule follower and so he absolutely wants to be there on time and wants to be in his seat on time. But this is I, you know, it's just, we just need to address that. The other thing I would like to address is the yonder pouches are wonderful. I think it's great that we don't have phones in the classroom and all of that. But we need more access to the stations for students to unlock them. When they're leaving, students are missing the bus because they cannot get to the stations in time. To be able to unlock them, wait in line, unlock them and then get on their buses. So we need to look at more accessibility to those stations. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have Laura Cheek.
My name's Laura Cheek. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here because of the way that our students are being treated at school, particularly the high school, and to me it is unacceptable. They're being spoken to like they are criminals. They're intimidated, humiliated and treated as if they've done something illegal before they step foot in that building. It's this is not discipline to those students. It is disrespect and an abuse of authority. It's damaging the trust of the students and the parents that they have in Red Oak High School. Our students are being called liars if they don't have their phone on them that day. My child leaves his phone at home. Almost 18 years old, he doesn't care about his phone. He's been called the liar two days in a row for not having his pouch. There was also an incident with my student where an AP physically grabbed his arm and forced his hand to cover his belt. Another female student was harassed by the same AP about her bra setting off the metal detectors. This is completely inappropriate, invasive and unprofessional. I've also heard from a student, quote, in the middle school, the kids were mean. In the high school, the adults are mean, end quote. These are serious violations of personal boundaries and student safety. I'd also like to address a new rule at the high school. That bans students from carrying or using cameras of any kind, digital or otherwise. The problem is not just the rule itself, but the way it was handled. Parents were never informed of this rule. The policy is not in the student handbook nor in the code of conduct. If the camera does not fall in the category of a communication device, it should be allowed. Why were parents not told of this unwritten rule? Why do you not want students to have cameras in the high school? Our students deserve safety, respect and dignity. They are not criminals. They are children.
Thank you. Okay, next we will move to our action items, starting with consent agenda. Are there any of the consent agenda consent agenda items? That anyone would like pulled?
I'd like to pull the Chromebooks device. They have some discussion on it.
Okay, that's. Six.
Number five.
Eight five.
Six A five.
And six A, six A eight.
A, anybody else? Okay, let's start with six A five, which is Chromebook Device Replacement. Mr. Knapp, what's your question?
Okay, I understand this is a lease. We're going to end up leasing these. Now, there's 1,500 of them. But 200 of them are different. I need some explanation why.
So with the new legislation this year, we the students cannot use their cellphone. So we had the banned students instead of purchasing another device for them, we've had them use their Chromebooks. For that device. And so it's a Chromebook that flips into tablet mode to where the keyboard folds behind it. And it's a touchscreen. Those devices, along with the other 1,300 that we're purchasing, the reason that we're purchasing them is because. The the software does not upgrade to the level that we need for testing this year. And so none of those that we have issued out, we were going to pull those, the ones that we issued out to band. We were actually pulling those from our stock this year. Because they're what some of our oldest ones, but they meet what bands needed in order to utilize the app that they use on for their to practice during class. And so that's why we went ahead. And as part of our purchase this year, we're buying those that can be used for that group along with. The other group for the testing supply. Does that make sense?
Yes, okay. Yeah, okay, I can understand that. There's there's one thing in here also in that proposal. It says repairs and it's I'm sure it's a typo. It says repairs in 710 business days. That's probably seven to 10 business days.
Yes.
But it needs to be.
Yes, we'll correct that.
Corrected. And then there's another line item that says increased resale value of end of life. If we're leasing these, what does that have to do with anything?
So at the end of the lease, then it's not a. Josh or Bill might be able to explain this one better, but it's not if we if we lose one of the devices or if it becomes to where we can't salvage that device. And we we don't have it at the end of the lease, then we can replace it for another device that's of greater equal value.
And then. I had one more. Okay, if we're going to lease these, I know when we buy them and we get rid of them, we're the ones that have to do the clean, the wipe. Now, this is all going to be done from them?
They actually worked with other districts and they come very highly recommended. And they will take care of that whole process at the point that we're done. They'll come and they'll they will pull them and then wipe them for us. Now with Chromebooks, it's not the same as a PC. Because a Chromebook is all web-based, there really isn't a wiping that has to be done in the same manner that a PC does.
Okay, okay. Well, like I said, my deal is is if we have any kind of data.
Right.
Personalized data on those PCs or on those tablets. I don't want that information getting out.
This this information, what would because they're all Chrome, the Chrome OS, it's not, they don't, it doesn't have the data like.
Okay.
Like a PC does.
Okay. Well, that was that was my main main things on that. I think that's pretty well answered the questions I had.
Good with it staying in consent?
Unless anybody else.
Okay, then we will move to.
Yeah, I have some more questions.
Oh, on that one?
Yes. So what's the plan for next year? And I mean, we were buying 1,500 this year. We. Had money for Shaw at 800. And we're buying 15, 1,500 more this year.
So the plan, the five-year plan that we've been working through is approximately 1,000 every year. And we've adjusted that some with based on what we've had available budget-wise. And so when you think about when when we bought the majority of our current inventory, it was through S R S R money. And so now we're having to replace that inventory and we're trying to do it gradually over several years instead of having it hit all at once. This amount was a bit of a surprise because Pearson and Cambam decided to change the rules on us a couple of weeks before school started.
So how many do we have that are going out next year?
I'm 1,500. Like that are going out this year is 1,500.
Okay. So with the lease agreement, which I agree with the lease agreement. Next year, are we going to have to re-sign another lease agreement? Is that going to be for? That set of 1,500? So every year we're going to have to sign another lease?
So what I'm working on right now is redoing our budget based on where we've been the last few years budget-wise. We were able to get some grants and then Shaw and then the new elementary. Has kind of changed what we had originally planned as our five-year cycle. And so I'm in the process because we had not planned. We thought that the stack that we had right now, we were going to be okay through testing. And then the requirements for testing changed. And so because of that, we're going to re-look at our five-year plan and see when can we push, can we, how can we balance it out? Knowing that the year that that new elementary opens, we're going to have that's that campus will be taken care of through bond as well. So the cycle that we were on was about 1,000 a year, just so that it was something we could build into the budget and not have one big expense one year.
Okay. You answered that one with what Johnny asked. So. We're spending an extra 130. For touchscreen devices just for the band?
I don't have the this, I don't have the actual side-by-side.
Okay. I mean, that's the difference, the difference of 1,300 in the money when in the what you sent us, what was in the. Feel like under the Dell comm deal. We have 1,300, 13 home Chromebooks at 305 and then 200 at 430.
Yes.
So the difference of the 125 being just for the band. Is that?
So what we were looking at was buying a separate device and and that would have been probably, they were looking at iPads or an Android tablet and we weren't finding anything that was going to be. That I know the iPads would have been outside that 130.
Right, but they do, they have Chromebooks now, right? Because it didn't.
They have Chromebooks now.
Last month, I thought we said that they were doing iPads.
They're doing Chromebooks.
Okay, I guess I missed that. Okay. Okay, are, so are we charging the band kids if they break those more money?
It's the same, it's the same across, like it's the it's the same fees across the.
If you didn't pay the extra money for this, you're going to have to buy another instrument for them to use. For them to be able to do their applications.
Because they used to use their phones, right?
Right. Okay. I didn't, I just don't, I'm all for buying $1,500 in Chromebooks, but. Spending the extra money just for the band students, I think is. I don't think it's fair to the rest of students. If you're not in band, then you don't get a touchscreen. So I'm all for buying your buying the Chromebooks, but the extra, the extra money just for the band kids, I think needs to. Come out of something else other than. The regular deal, I think that ought to come out of the. Binards. And the difference.
But then is it, is it the music that?
Their application. So they use two apps that have to be downloaded onto their device. And so in the past, they do it on their their phone. And when they're out. And when they're out on the field, they use their phone for those. And so then when they're in class, they need to be able to use their, their, they have to use a device to see, to, to work on the same music that they're working on for them.
So were they able to use their phone on the field?
On the field, they can, just not during.
It's outside of school.
It's at six o'clock, it's rather.
Okay, Shauna, so do you want that item pulled from Consent Agenda and voted on separately?
Yes, I would.
Does anybody else have questions on that one, on six A five? Okay, if not, let's look at six A eight. Purchase of Weapons Detection Systems. That was Sean?
Yes. Um. So the Weapons Detection System that, uh, we currently have at the high school, is that the same purchase that we wanna put for, um, Goodlow? Is the same, is it the same?
What's the same, it's gonna be the same thing across the district.
Same thing that we have, same thing that everybody walked through tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, um, yeah, um, we have officers for that, um, that are gonna be there at Goodlow for the, for that, that whole thing, cause most, for the whole process, you know, the most vulnerable time that we have, uh, is when we invite people to our, uh, to our school. Um, so I just wanna make sure that not only do we have our training personnel there, that we also have an officer there, uh, for that, um.
So, so yeah, I could share a few points. Uh, there's three categories, elementary schools, secondary schools, um, and, and then Goodlow. So at the, through, at the five elementary schools, there's less staff that's available to man the open gate system. So we're gonna require, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask that the SROs help significantly in terms of the monitoring of that throughout the day at those campuses. At the secondary level, we do have more staff and more discretion. So we have more administrators, uh, we have hall monitors, we have others. In the case of the elementary and the secondary, uh, the ask that we've already had of chief is that the SROs be front and present. So if students and staff, parents are going through the open gate system, that we have SROs and security that are helping us, uh, man those. And when we need to do the secondary search and wand, the SROs are there to step in and help us. I think if you go to the elementary campuses, that's where you should see more of a significant presence, uh, because there's just two or three office staff, uh, members that can help us with that. There's not a hall monitor at the elementary level, there's not another dedicated staff member. So at the elementary level, you have the secretary, uh, ISS staff, and then the PMS person. So they are gonna require, uh, they're gonna lay, lay heavily on the SRO to help them get through that process. So if the SRO needs to step away, uh, from manning the weapons detection system, he or she would get in touch with the front office at the elementary campuses and say, I'm gonna go make some rounds, there's a few things that I need to go do, can you cover for me? But in no circumstance can the SRO at the elementary schools just leave without communicating to the front office staff. It's a li- it feels and looks a little different at secondary, although if you were go to, if you were to go to the high school or Shaw or Rams, you're still gonna see that the SRO is present and available. At Goodlow Stadium for Friday Night Lights, uh, you should definitely see a significant presence of the SROs right there front and center, um, as folks are going through the open gate system.
Do we have a policy, uh, do we have a, a school policy on our, um, weapons detection system?
So, uh, so for the last few days, I've been kind of searching. I reached out to Christie a few days ago and asked her if we had a policy. She said we didn't have a policy, but after further review, there's a small snippet in FNF Local, um, that has to do with searches. And so, um, I'm probably gonna take that to Cabinet tomorrow, um, so that the Cabinet can see the snippet that actually calls out, uh, metal detectors. Again, it's, it's like a paragraph. But I've had an opportunity to look at Mansfield and Corsicana, they have a policy that's a full page versus a paragraph. So, so in terms of the conversation tonight, we do have a policy that would cover. But with Cabinet, what we could do is review what we have now, review what Mansfield has and Corsicana, and just kinda look at it and just say, you know, are enough of our bases covered? Or do we feel like we need to bring something to the board for, uh, for the board to vote on?
And we have a process, we don't really have a policy, but I'm gonna give you.
Okay.
We do have a process, I don't know if that might clarify anything that.
Yeah. Okay, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get a search or seizure thing that might come up, uh, going through that, uh, going through our detection system. If, uh, we need to make sure that we post something that says that, uh, everybody will go through our weapons detection system. Um, everybody knows already, you know, I mean, if you go, go anywhere now from any sporting event, you're gonna walk through one, uh, probably most people don't realize they're gonna do it out of high school.
And our process is on the website, I can't remember Ms. Frimble where it's at, but I know it's on.
Okay.
Police Department, it is.
On the police department, okay. But nothing on our athletic page?
Okay.
Sweet, cool, I.
Not policy, but process.
Process.
Okay.
But, but we do have a policy in FNF.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you all.
It's on the police department, that's great, can you put it on maybe athletic page?
Yes, she's gonna link it, yes, yeah, we'll get that linked over.
Okay, Sean, are, are you good on that one?
Yes, ma'am, I'm good, I got mine.
Okay. So. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda excluding number five.
I move that we approve the, the Consent Agenda except for six A five as presented.
Second.
That's a. That's a motion by Mr. Sebring and a second by Ms. Knott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, then we will go back to the Chromebook discussion. And. Do I ask Ms. Sanford, just wait, just ask for a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Chromebook Device Replacement Plan? Going on? There's no motion, so that item fails? Is that correct, Ms. Sanford?
That is correct.
Okay. Then we will move to consideration of the twenty twenty-five tax rate and resolution. Dr. Johnston?
Good evening. Well, this is a kind of a two-part process, one's very simple, and we're asking that the board approve a tax rate of one point zero six three three per hundred dollars of property value, which is broken into the M and O and INS of point seven one five two for the maintenance and operation, and point three four eight one for the interest and sinking. That's a simple thing. The complex thing came about in two thousand nineteen with the Texas Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act, which has been, we've brought this forward the last seven years. And that is a, the no new revenue. Basically, what that component does, it takes last year's property values, and then what the values are this year for those same properties, and wants you to see what the tax rate is for that. But with property values going up, the tax rate's gonna always go down. In this case, the certified property values went up about nine point eight percent from last year to this year, for the, when we got the certified values in July. And that could be misconstrued by the residents, because the actual residential property went down with the hundred and forty dollar, or excuse me, a hundred forty thousand homestead exemption going up from a hundred to a hundred forty thousand. What's gone up and was caused us to go up by nine point eight is the commercial property. You know, all the data centers we have coming in the area. That, that, the commercial property doubled from twenty twenty-four to this year. And the top ten of those, that were in the top ten taxpayers in twenty twenty-four, which were pretty much all commercial property, went up by thirty percent this year, just those top ten. So that, that commercial property has really pre-increased our property values. Our tax for this year actually has gone down by three point six three percent. And since two thousand nineteen, the M and O tax rate has gone down almost thirty-nine percent. So it's not like we're increasing the tax rate. And the problem with what's, which I talked about, the no new revenue, they want, if the actual rate to maintain is higher than the no new revenue, then they have certain language that they need to be talked about when the board is approving it. And basically, it's basically saying that the tax rate is going up. It'll, or the tax rate will raise more taxes, which makes sense if property values are going up in the same tax rate year over year, you're gonna have more taxes collected. Uh, so that's sort of misconstrued. Uh, and so essentially, what we're gonna do is ask the board to approve the regular tax rate, but then also make reference to the fact that if you do that calculation for the no new revenue, it actually implies that the tax rate is going up fifteen point six five percent over what the no new, the no new, the rate to maintain tax rate, which is the approved tax rate, is fifteen point six five percent higher than the no new revenue tax rate. So that's kind of a misconstrued for the community. So we just asked that the board approve the tax rate as presented for the rate to maintain. And if there's any questions?
Okay, just, just for clarification for public, they might be listening or out there. So last year it was one point one oh three three.
Yes.
But it's going down to one point oh six three three, so it's actually decreasing.
And actually, in the eighty-ninth legislature session, they reduced it by an additional three point three one cents as well.
Okay.
Again, it's just, if, if you look at it, it's going down, but the language shows it's going up.
Yes.
Which is why they have us do it that way, I don't understand.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Doctor Johnston? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt the, uh, resolution setting the, the tax rate in property tax, uh, rate, um, be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of one point zero six three three, which is effectively a fifteen point six five percent increase in the maintenance and operation tax rate.
Or second?
My second.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Knott and a second by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, consideration of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year amended budget. Dr. Johnston?
If you remember back in June, we asked the board to adopt the budget. It was a pretty basic budget, because the legislative session had just ended, and we didn't have guidance on all the different new components. So we had di- asked the board to adopt a budget, we didn't have any tax, excuse me, we didn't have any salary increases in it, other than minor salary increases. After we've done all that, we came back in July with a salary increase for all the staff. And now we'll come back based on the property values and all the other information. Uh, came back, we're adding about three point four million dollars to the general fund. And that mainly is for salaries. And it's also, there is some money set aside, because with opening of the Shaw Middle School, there's certain things that were just taking place at the Red Oak Middle School, such as for events, and now they're gonna have events at two different facilities. So they need additional support and U I L costs and expenses and things like that. So those are the main components in the general fund. We also have issued the twenty twenty-five series bonds, and so that information is in the debt service fund. And so we asked the board to approve the amended budget as presented. They're also, back in two thousand nineteen, they asked us to also add as an amend, if you weren't really changing your budget, they still wanted you to amend the budget to add that no new revenue information. So there's an appendix on the document of the different funds that has that no new revenue. So it's a, so that's part of the amended budget approval process as well.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the amended twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget and appendix for the General Operating Fund, Student Nutrition Fund, and Debt Service Fund as presented.
Second.
That's a motion by Mr. Sebring and a second by Mr. Knott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Hope same sign.
Bless you.
Thank you. Bless you.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Consideration of assignment of fund balance and resolution.
And this is another document that we brought back every year as well in August, that one of our special education grants we get, Idea B, says that if you have resident, if you have residential students and you don't have enough funding, an Idea B, that you need to set aside some of your general fund fund balance. So over the last several years, we've set aside eighty, a hundred eighty thousand dollars for that. We've not needed it in the past, but it's just a process of setting aside just in case we have students that go outside the district to a regi- residential setting for special education services.
Just one, we have a, an agreement with Muskie?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of the funds from the unassigned, uh, thirty-six hundred to the assigned thirty-five ninety fund balance, uh, for potential residential placement.
Your second?
Second.
If it's a motion by Mr. Knott and a second by Mr. Sebring? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, District of Innovation Plan, well, oh, I'm on the wrong one, I don't see. Consideration of Manager at Risk for twenty twenty-five Bond Projects.
Yes, hey, on May the twelfth of twenty twenty-five, uh, in a regular school board meeting, uh, the school board approved the Construction Manager at Risk, C M A R, Construction Delivery Method, and allowed administration to move forward with the process of selecting a C M, C M A R for the twenty twenty-five Bond Projects. That includes all projects, uh, the new Career and Technical Education Building with a cafeteria at the Red Oak High School, New Elementary School at Harmony Way, Practice Gym Additions at Red Oak High School, Sub-Varsity Athletic Venue at Red Oak High School, and Goodlow Stadium renovations. So we had thirteen highly qualified C M A R construction companies that responded, uh, to our solicitation that was duly posted and advertised according to the Texas Government Code. A committee reviewed all responses and selected five different companies to interview on August the twelfth, in an effort to ensure we contracted, uh, contracted with the most qualified company that will provide the best value for Red Oak I S D students, staff, and community. After the interviews, vetting and careful consideration, the highest-ranking Construction Manager at Risk, C M A R Company, was Joris General Contractors. And the district's next steps will be to attempt to negotiate a contract with the C M A R for performing pre-construction services to establish a guaranteed maximum price. And should the guaranteed maximum price fit within the budget allowed and established by Red Oak I S D, the, uh, Construction Manager at Risk contract will be continued through the general construction of the projects. So we are recommending to the board Joris General Contractors as our Construction Manager at Risk. Any questions?
No questions, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that, uh, we authorize the superintendent to negotiate and enter into a contract with Joris General Contractors. Make a motion that, uh, we authorize the superintendent to negotiate and enter into a contract with Joris General Contractors for performing pre-construction service to establish a guaranteed maximum price G M P and further continue through the general construction of the projects should the G M P fit within the budget allowed.
Second.
That was a motion by Mr. Knut and a second by Mr. Sebring. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero.
Forward to our continued partnership with you, Joris. You're present also in order.
Okay, next, we are going to discuss the purchase of school bus from the 2025, 26 budget.
This is a school bus to, uh, add to our fleet. We're needing to add a special needs route. Uh, it's a route now, and so this will allow us to do that. This isn't the replacement buses that we get every year. This is to add a route, so we'll be adding also a driver and, and a monitor for this, uh, for this route. So, uh, it is, uh, recommended that, uh, the board approve the purchase of one special needs bus with the lift gate and the appropriate three-point seat belt from the twenty five, twenty six budget year from Longhorn Bus Sales using the buy board contract seven two 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 three.
Any questions?
How, how quick will we be able to get the bus?
This is a stop bus, so it's not, uh, it's, it's a kind of a mid-sized bus. So they have them in stock, so I can get it within probably a couple of weeks.
Oh, that's good.
Once they fit it out with our radio and everything, and then they'll get it to me.
Is this a regular, I think you might have said this, is this a regular turnover for the special needs?
No, it's a new route.
This is a whole new route?
This would be a new route because our buses are getting a little overcrowded with all the new additions.
Say th, this bus or if, if it goes down, do we have like a backup?
Yes, we have some of our older buses we keep for backups.
Okay.
Two, I think we have two backup buses right now. We can use one of those for the route, and it's a backup bus. So it's an older bus that, you know, we can put out there for a week or two till we get something repaired, but it's not something we'd wanna put on a everyday route.
Okay, perfect.
Do we have someone else scheduled this year, uh, as far as replacing buses?
Well, we've already did our three for this summer.
I was gonna say, I remember we did, uh, we did one, one or, you know, one or two.
Usually by year, June.
Three, I, I do three a year and have done three a year for the last twelve years.
Okay.
Uh, I usually bring that to you around March, so we can have them July first for the next fiscal year. And we did get our three in and, and they are on routes, and then we was able to park three of the old buses. Uh, they also come up with the, the seat belt is in the legislature right now. I think they're passing that. So we're gonna have to look into outfitting buses that we already have that are old and wore out with seat belts. And so we're trying to come up with some stuff for that too, but as long as we continue the three, it'll kind of weed some of those out too.
Sure.
Stay till one is out so much.
Any other questions?
Forget that one dish you had turned in the same week.
We have, do we have a motion?
I, I make a motion to approve the purchase of one special needs bus with the lift gate, uh, the appropriate three-point seat belt from the twenty five, twenty six budget from Longhorn Bus Sales.
Your second?
Second.
I got some motion by Mr. Kelly and the second by Ms. Knut. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. And next, we have the discussion on turf installation for Red Oak High School baseball and softball fields.
This is, uh, long overdue and very exciting that we get to, uh, bring this to y'all. Uh, this is turfing the baseball and softball fields. Uh, we're, uh, we're doing that through Hellis. And, uh, you can look at the proposal in front of you, and it's our recommendation that the board approve the purchase of the turf replacement as detailed in the proposal submitted by Hellis Construction in the amount of three point six three oh and two hundred and forty using, uh, one GPA government procurement allowance contract number twenty three dash oh one D P dash oh three athletic services opportunities and minor instruction of contract and general construction.
And this is with the bond funds, twenty twenty five bond funds.
Any questions?
So.
So we're not gonna be able to get any of the alternate stuff, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
To the athletic director, and he is happy with what we're bringing. We are pushing the fence back on the softball field, and we're doing, uh, a lot of stuff, pushing home plate up, so it gives it more room on the sides, and that's where a lot of the money was spent. They had budgeted originally around three. Uh, we're coming in a little over, but it's getting us what we need. And he said if he can have that, he's gonna be very satisfied with what we got. We can look in the future. If there's bond money left over, we can always come back and address those at the end. If there's anything left in kind of that bond package, uh, talking with, uh, the the people that if there's anything left, we'll, we can come back always and do that other stuff. But this gets us way ahead of where we are now.
All right, so. What's the date? I, I mean, are, are the kids, are the kids gonna be able to use it this year?
Yes.
Okay. All on here.
When I leave, I'm calling him. I'm meeting with him tomorrow, and they're gonna start immediately. They said it's about a hundred and fifty days to get it turned around. They can get it turned around before January. I think first game is eight.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
I know the person, sometime in January.
I told him that's the important date. If y'all can make sure this happens right now.
Yes. I'm all for it. Whatever, let's make it happen.
Are there, are there cameras or anything out that can see people that come in at nighttime that decide, oh, let's use that pretty field out there and start messing up?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, I think there's cameras around the buildings, but I.
Yes and no, but not on, not on the fields. I think they, I think we just have the, the walkways.
Behind the stands and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have any national field.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion we approve, uh, the purchase of the turf replacement as detailed in a proposal submitted by Hellis Construction.
I have a second?
Second.
That is a motion by Mr. Knut and a second by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero.
Let's get her done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all had your information out of.
Before you throw that, we can go back. Any action but six A five Chromebook replacement? They failed our vote. But they, they need to know what, what do they need to do to get these Chromebooks? What do you want, what do, what is it you want to see? They get the Chromebooks that they need to get to these kids.
I'm all for buying fifteen hundred Chromebooks, but I don't want to spend the extra money for a certain organization, because once we do that, we're setting a precedent that if I do this, I'm only gonna be able to do it for this group of folks or this group of folks. I'm all for buying fifteen hundred Chromebooks, um, and because I know that it's needed. I'm not against buying Chromebooks. I just don't think that we need to. That fifteen hundred Chromebooks is what we need. The additional for a certain organization is the difference, is, is the difference for me. Uh, it's not that I don't want the Chromebooks. Uh, we need the Chromebooks. I'm just not for spending the extra money on the two hun, the two hundred extra Chromebooks. The difference in money.
Can I ask a quick question? Are those two hundred Chromebooks able to be used for testing as well, or is that? It is their device.
So what we'll, what we'll need to do, and what we'll need to do, and I'll reach out to our vendors, is if we choose to not do it, then a band student will have to have a device for band and.
And a Chromebook.
But they'll have to.
So the cost could possibly be the same, if not more.
So, so if it.
They'll have to have some device to use, yeah.
Do it, does that, we have to come back and re-present this or have a special meeting to have this brought back to us to vote on it again?
Uh, the next meeting's September the, what, eighteenth?
But when they need it.
I mean, I mean, they, like, do they not have, do we not have enough Chromebooks for everybody now?
They just don't have a device to do band.
They're currently using devices.
And we'll have some testing in November, and we're not positive if our current devices will work on the November. And so that's what we're, that's what we're up against, and then just Pearson and Canadian just hold us in for us. We're gonna.
So what is band using right now for?
Using.
Oh, so they would have an old device and a new device.
Those old devices in us through this year, probably next year, with the current old devices that we're currently using. Those devices will not work for testing, is what Pearson has told us.
So you would need to change your, your quote to be all the same devices, but it would, so you'd have to have a new quote. Okay.
So is it the O S that's the issue?
And right now, the ones that we have are not.
So is this their for band, is that for their class?
For their class, in their class time, they, they use their phone, but now they can't. So now they have to use a device that will allow them to connect to the app that they use for.
So this is about a class special need. Are there other classes that have specialized equipment that we have to purchase?
So with our C T E classes, um, we, so we got away from, from laptops for them, and so they have desktops in their class to meet the needs for those.
So, so all I'm saying is there's already precedent set that we do different things for different classes.
Yeah, but that's an extracurricular activity. That's not a.
Well, is it a class or is it an extracurricular? Same thing with softball, baseball, and we just.
And they don't purchase those. Yeah, yeah, that was on a bond, Tommy.
Well, I know it's not a bond, but it's still all, it's still all public money.
Okay.
So.
It has to be two.
But the, if they, it waits.
We'll wait, we'll wait. We can wait till the next, till the next meeting, and it's not gonna cause a.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Can it be voted on again now? Is that what, that's my correct understanding?
Yes, you can call it for the agenda item again.
Okay, but she doesn't have the amount of money.
You're talking about the current. Without the ones from the current.
We have to get the amount of money.
What's on the agenda? He's asking, can he vote on what's on the agenda? Could you open it back up for another motion? And yes, you could do that.
Okay.
It didn't fail. You took no action earlier.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't vote on it.
You just took no action.
Okay.
So it could be brought back.
Didn't have a vote.
Okay, so I'm gonna open it back up for a motion to purchase Chromebook devices replacement.
But if we make a motion, we make a motion to accept what we have.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's what we're voting on now, what we, what was out there.
Now, let's present.
That's correct.
Okay, so do I hear a motion? So again.
Make a motion we approve the lease of Chromebooks with Dell time through inside financial service in total of six hundred and sixty two thousand, six hundred and fifty four dollars using choice partners contract number twenty two slash oh four three K N dash oh seven.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Mr. Anderson and a second by Mr. Sebring. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes seven, I mean, six one. And now, we'll go back to you. You have information items in your packet. Did anybody have any questions on those? If not, we will go into, the time is eight thirty five, and we will go into closed session.
Thank y'all.